All right, we will call the school board meeting back into order. Do I have a motion coming out of closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I recommend that the closed meeting be concluded and the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which this certification applies, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the closed meeting be concluded, and the board certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting, to which the certification applies, and two, only such business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The motion passes. We're out of closed session. Are there any motions out of closed session?
Mr. Chair, our motion that the school board upholds the superintendent's recommendation for readmission in student case number 010917-A.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second that the school board upholds the superintendent's recommendation for readmission in the student case number 010917-A. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. And the motion passes. Great, and we are going to pick up now with our pledge of allegiance. I have asked Cameron Wood with Troop 1187, he's a life scout, to lead us in the pledge of allegiance tonight.
That's Luke.
Peaches to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation undermined, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and welcome to all of the scouts here. Are you all with Troop 1187? Great. Other scouts? Scouts from a different troop? All right, wow. It's like a jamboree, right? Well, welcome, each one of you. I'm sure you're out here not because it's an assignment that you have for scouting or any other reasons, but because it's the most exciting thing you could do on this Monday evening. That's 12 degrees. So, welcome, every one of you. Just switching gears a little bit, if you please join me tonight in a moment of silence for Aaron Smith, who enjoyed driving a bus for special education students for the past four years and who passed away December 23rd, and for Mary Baker, who was a school bus aide since 2003, and a rising tide recipient who passed away on December 30th. Our thoughts and prayers are with their families. Please join me in a moment of silence for them. Thank you very much. We will move on to our announcements, and board members, if there are any changes, please note those when we read these. The Personnel Committee meeting will be held.
No.
Will not be held this week, will be postponed for a future date.
Cancelled, and, yeah, cancelled for January.
So, the January Personnel Committee is cancelled.
Yep.
The Parks and Rec Cooperative will meet Tuesday, January 17th at 6:00 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. The Mountain Vista Governors School Governing Board will meet Thursday, January 19th at 8:00 AM in the Warren County School Board Office. The ACIS meeting is Thursday, January 19th at 4:15 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. The school board work session is to be determined and announced at a later date. We'll talk about that more, it relates to our budget calendar. There will be a Building Committee meeting on Thursday, January 26th at 8:30 AM in the School Administration Conference Room. The School Health Advisory Committee will meet Wednesday, February 1st at 8:00 AM in the Central Complex Building Conference Room. The School Support Council will meet Wednesday, February 1st at 7:00 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a FAWK Year Excellence in Education Foundation meeting Thursday, February 2nd at 4:30 PM in the School Administration Conference Room. There will be a Special Education Advisory Committee meeting Thursday, February 2nd at 5:30 PM in the Central Complex Building A Conference Room. There will be a Personnel Committee meeting on Thursday, February 9th at 8:00 AM in the School Administration Conference Room. The Finance Committee will meet February 13th at 5:00 PM in the FAWK Year High School Library, and the next regular school board meeting will be Monday, February 13th at 7:00 PM, right here in the FAWK Year High School Falcon Room. Any changes? We will now move on to our citizens' time. Community involvement is an important component of the successful school division, and the school board welcomes public input. There's no back and forth dialogue during the citizens' time, however, ideas and concerns brought to this board this evening may be referred to the appropriate administrators for future information, research, and response when needed. Please be respectful of all speakers and limit your comments to three minutes. I'll call your name, and if you would please come up to the podium, please speak into the microphone so that your voice can be recorded. I only have one person signed up to speak this evening, that's Liz Goodson from the Center District.
Thank you, good evening. I do have to make a clarification, I was from the Center District. I have recently moved to Falls Church for financial reasons, so, and I don't particularly like living out of county and teaching in county, but I didn't want to leave my job just because I had to move, so. I'm here this evening, I would like to just let the board, advise the board of something coming up from the FAWK Year Education Association, and you probably know what I'm talking about, it's Read Across America. Read Across America is celebrated every year on March 2nd. This year, March 2nd is a Thursday. For the last few years, the Education Association has been working with the public libraries to do a joint activity, so we're going to be doing that again at all three libraries on Saturday, March 4th, and we, if any of the board members can attend and be, serve as a reader, or just come, it would be great. We don't know at this point how many students will show up, but the, in the past, the attendance has been pretty, pretty good, so I'll update you should anything change, but our plan right now is March 4th. It usually starts at 10:00 in the morning, goes for about an hour, and there's an art activity, craft activity, and then, of course, readers, and there will be someone at each of the libraries to coordinate and so on. So, hope you can join us. Okay? Thank you.
Can you send an email out?
Yeah, sure, I'll be glad to.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Is there anybody else that wishes to speak this evening? Okay, we will move on then. At this time, board members may report on their liaison activities and committee meetings. It's been a month since we've met together, and I'm going to start down here with Mr. Mason.
Oh, I did, I attended the Third Grade Christmas Program at Emman Perez. That was a very enlightening program.
Great. Mr. Blant.
Mr. Chair, it was a quiet month for me, so I have nothing to report this time.
Wow. Ms. Sloan.
It was a quiet month. We did not have our personnel meeting, we just had our finance meeting about an hour ago, so I think Prashant has some updates for us there, and some information items, and a motion for action as well tonight, so thank you for that. If you didn't hear about the Kettle Run High School Yearbook, ranked among top in the nation, where is my, it was named 10, one of the 10 most outstanding high school yearbooks for 2016. If you haven't seen it, it is beautiful, absolutely gorgeous, and if you didn't buy one yet for 2017, you should purchase one, because I bet this is going to win again. I believe we also had Liberty High School publications that won as well, and it's just really exciting, because imagine, all of the high schools across the nation, and every one of them has a yearbook, and for Kettle Run and Liberty to be recognized, we're very excited about that. I think many of you know our governor announced his education and workforce legislation, and, Mr. Chair, I may have some more detailed information as we get into this session. You know I'll be in Richmond many, many times in January and February, but you may have noticed one of his top five education and workforce bills, the first one, I think, may have given some people some thought that this is terrific, this is exciting, and Suzanne, you must be really excited with your virtual background. It's, the governor has announced that he would like to expand access to virtual education and require each school division to provide a free, full-time virtual learning option to students in grades K through 12. And so, Dr. Jack, I know you have lots of money laying around for this, and I think many people initially thought, well, that's great, virtual, requiring the school divisions to do that, I think brings up quite a few problems. First of all, equity, you can imagine some of the school divisions that already have that going, it would be very easy for them, a school division like FAWK Year, that would be quite expensive to require that. Lewis would need a raise, and others in his department would need to be hired, it's an interesting undertaking and an interesting bill. There's quite a bit behind it that I'd love to talk about if you're interested in offline, but I will certainly be speaking quite a bit against this, even though virtual and school choice is something that I'm in favor of, I don't believe that requiring every school division to do that at this time would be something that the teachers or school divisions would be supporting. I think, was that it? I thought I had one more thing, but it isn't it. I think that's all I have, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Great. Ms. Grove.
Just want to recognize the great job that Liberty High School did with their winter concert, and it was a full house that evening, and a lot of alumni, a stage full of alumni joined them at the end, so it was a great concert. Yeah, yeah.
Fantastic. Dr. Jack?
Two announcements just quickly, Mr. Streshta and myself will be attending the VASBO Business Meeting next, next week in Richmond, which is, again, as far as things that the state offers, no, it's Richmond. Are you pointing like this? No, oh, it is this week, I'm sorry. No, you're going this week, I go next week. But it's, it's a good, and we, I should be able to bring back some additional information about the state of the, particularly the revenue situation in the state. I don't know that much is going to change, but it's typically a good time to hear from some in-the-know politicians and folks from the State Department, so that, that should be helpful. And then, also, we had our, the School Support Council met just before holiday break, and, actually, no, it was after holiday break, it was January 6th. Very good meeting, and we were able to provide the school quality survey results to the, to that group, they were well received. It was a good meeting, and look forward to passing the new bylaws for the School Support Council in the February meeting. That's it.
Great, I would echo too, the School Support Council really is organized. I mean, they really are really, very diligent in their work. I was, had the opportunity through an invitation to spend some time, a day, at PB Smith, observing some of their programs. I was very interested in hearing about some of the collaboration in action, seeing that, things that we saw through some of our school improvement reports. And what I noticed was how much movement there was of students, classroom to classroom, always engaged, but what really pleased me was that they were never more than five feet from a book. So, they were always near a book that they could access, they were always reading, and for me to see kids in K through 2 reading, whatever level they were at, they were constantly improving, and that was very exciting to see. I saw fantastic behavior within the classroom management, and I think that, that is attributable to a lot of the activity they did. I was also very pleased to see the cafeteria and how the cafeteria worked. They, these kids had three cups, you know, the red, green, and blue, you want to keep, red, green, and yellow, excuse me, and you wanted to keep your green, right? But it was, because that means you're behaving well, but these children were allowed to engage with one another. They were able to let off steam during that cafeteria time, and it was a real model of excellence, I thought, so congratulations to Ms. Smith and all of PB Smith for the work they're doing over there. I will also say that one of the teachers is going, went through a program that was funded through the Excellence in Education Foundation to learn how to manage their classroom a little bit better at a, and she said it was just eye-opening for her, so she's really bringing that back into the classroom. I was able to observe some of that fantastic stuff, so, thanks for the invitation, Ms. Smith. If there's nothing else, we will move on to our financial management report. Prashant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board. Dr. Jack, Happy New Year. This is your financial report as of November 30th. The Finance Committee was updated for, with the mid-year report this evening. We will begin with the, oh. He was hiding!
Ow, I can see him.
Oh, yeah.
The report is color-coded by our different fund types. The first fund is our operating fund, the fund that we primarily talk about when we discuss our programs. Currently, the fund is in a positive balance, so as of November, if you recall from prior months, we have put a key indicator called the use of fund balance, and you will see that revenues are greater than expenditures. This is what we would expect every year, and the turnaround should happen right around this time, so we are in good shape there. Revenues are around 39%, which is consistent with prior years. The blue section is our school asset fund, this is the school, the fund that contains our cash-to-capital programs and our maintenance programs, technology, and the fund is in a positive balance. This fund is primarily driven by projects, and funding is expended as projects are completed. The next group here is our yellow group, which is the school textbook fund. Again, we are in a positive balance. The note I will make about the textbook fund is we have a $1.2 million balance, and in the coming, in the weeks to come, I anticipate you'll be hearing about new textbook adoption. And our school nutrition fund is currently, revenues are slightly lower than expenditures, but if you look at the previous year, we're actually closing the gap, and we're watching this fund closely. The Finance Committee has not asked us to mark it yellow yet, but it's performing quite well. One of the primary reasons for that is actually, I think, not having snow days yet, so just keep your fingers crossed, and that should be great. I did want to make one minor note for the school board to note, in the above green section, I mentioned this at the Finance Committee meeting, the federal government is updating their, do you remember last year, the, the state was updating their database, so the federal government is updating their system, and so there'll be a slight delay in federal revenues until about April, so don't be alarmed, it'll be fine, and then we'll, we'll, we'll just catch up. And in a minute, I will update you in, on the school, on the, not school calendar, the budget calendar. Any questions?
Any questions? Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from Ms. Downs about the Financial Resources Department report. Excuse me, Human Resources.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, Dr. Jack. The following is a brief summary of the occurrences in the Human Resources Department for the month of December. We currently have seven and a half positions vacant for certified vacancies still for this school year, and then we have 10 vacancies for classified. 10's not really a true number, because we do have quite a few bus driver vacancies and substitutes that are filling those vacancies, so they both, one feeds the other. So, on January 24th, we do have a jobs fair scheduled here at FAWK Year High School's cafeteria from 3:00 to 5:00 PM. We're looking for school nutrition, transportation, as well as facilities, positions, and then on March 18th, 2017, will be our annual education fair at Liberty High School. Any questions this evening? Thank you.
Thank you. We will move on to our consent agenda.
Consent agenda, Mr. Chair, the minutes from the December 12th, 2016 School Board Meeting, number 13A, the monthly bills and payroll, 13B, number 13C, personnel recommendations, which include the following: new, newly hired, one teacher, one psychologist, one fresh grant dietitian, one instructional assistant, and three custodians; the resignation of one teacher, one area building manager, one instructional assistant, and one custodian; and the retirement of one associate superintendent, her seat is missing, she's usually right there, I'm sorry, I had to pause, one associate superintendent, one office associate, and one bus aide, and one bus driver, which we had our moment of silence for previously.
I'll go second. There's been a motion and a second that the school board approved the consent agenda, which includes minutes from the December 12th, 2016 School Board Meeting, the monthly bills and payroll, personnel recommendations, which include the following: new and newly hired, one teacher, one psychologist, one fresh grant dietitian, one instructional assistant, and three custodians; the resignation of one teacher, one area building manager, one instructional assistant, and one custodian; the retirement of one associate superintendent and one office associate; and the expiration of one bus aide and one bus driver, who we will dearly miss. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. The motion passes. And we will move on to informational items. First is revision of instructional policies. Dr. Burguin will present the revisions.
Good evening, Mr. Gorg, members of the board, Dr. Jack. You have before you request to approve the following six changes, revisions to the instructional policies. All of these are mandated by law and have been reviewed by our school board attorney. I can go over each of these, or you can, you've probably already looked at them. Do you have any questions for me about them? They're pretty straightforward.
Any changes, any questions? If we do have any, we can forward them to you, but...
Okay, that'd be great, thank you.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
It's set.
Yep, that's fine.
We will place them on consent agenda unless we hear otherwise, if there's additional questions or concerns. Thank you. The second is revision of student policy 7-4.2, interscholastic athletics. Mr. Finn.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Dr. Jack, here this evening to request that the school board review revisions to policy 7-4.2, interscholastic athletics, and consider those revisions for approval on February 13th, 2017, School Board Meeting. The reason for the revisions, again, is due to the changes at the General Assembly in the last session for a House bill and a Senate bill, specifically Senate Bill 665, requires now that middle school athletes have a current physician's approval through an exam by licensed physician, nurse practitioner, or physician's assistance within the last 12 months, and be found to be physically fit for athletic competition. Interestingly, we've done this all along.
That was my question.
Yeah, we do, but now it'll be in policy and required. And then additionally, House Bill 954, a return-to-learn protocol for students who have suffered concussions or some sort of head injury, and as, as you probably know, we have already the return-to-play protocol in our policy and regulation. This would add the return-to-learn requirement, and what return-to-learn means, if I can read, because the print is very small and I'm getting old. It means instructional modification that support a controlled progressive increase to cognitive activities while the student recovers from a brain injury, typically a concussion. So, what we will be doing subsequent to the policy being approved, we will be adapting our regulation 7-4.2A to incorporate a, a protocol for return-to-learn. And, you know, the, the whole point of it is too, is to increase awareness of teachers and our healthcare providers in the community to make sure they understand that when there is a brain injury, there's an important period of time where there has to be cognitive rest, and barring that, you could do further damage, so, that's where we're at. Thank you.
Can I just ask one question? How do we get this information out to the physicians?
We, we've already had, over the last couple of years, good conversations with them, and so we will mount an outreach effort to the physicians' offices. We have certain physicians' groups that we typically work with, and then they're pretty good about spreading the word, but what I'd like to do is develop some sort of an easy physician-friendly checklist that they can fill out, so that it's informative along the lines of the requirement, but helps our teachers understand what students can and cannot do at a given point in time.
And the VHSL provided form doesn't, that doesn't suffice, then?
The, we, it might be a good idea just to look at that first.
I don't think it's been updated, is the problem, right? I don't think it's 2016.
Yeah, there's, there's three areas that, that they focus on in this bill, difficulty with concentration, organization, long and short-term memory, they also look at sensitivity to bright lights and sounds, and then, third area is short-term problems with speech, reasoning, planning, or problem solving. So, we'll probably develop that along those lines, because that's typically what the issues are during recovery.
Probably going to have to adjust the newly, the newest regulation regarding non-public school students, middle school students' participation. Is that, that the phrase, the wording there doesn't have anything, doesn't have much to do with what's in that?
Return-to-learn.
Right, well, that and the requirement related to a physician, I think we ask, we ask for a letter from a physician or just certification?
Right, right. The good news about that is that all exists in your regulation.
So, I can just change that?
Yeah, so we'll work together and get that done. Yep, yep.
Maybe for another person, another time, but teacher training on this is up and prepared, because they'll be asking questions.
Yeah, I guess that's a good, good thing, I'll review that with Ms. Downs and see the best way to approach that, because it is a matter of awareness, and, you know, the assumption of a teacher, if you're in my classroom, you're here to learn, but, you know, a graduated return may say that they can't do certain things when they're in your class. So, okay, thank you.
I think we can put this, if you guys have any questions about, if you all have any questions about this, we can change it, but otherwise, I think this is fairly set. We're going to move now to the Middle School Modernization Committee recommendation. Ms. Bourne and Ms. Duncan, who was part of the committee and selected to help present this report to us, will have the floor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Jack. I'm pleased to be here tonight to talk to you about the middle school modernization effort that's been underway now, that we initially discussed in November last year, November 2015, so we've been talking about this for some time now. And with me is Joanne Duncan, and Joanne is a member of the committee. I'm going to just briefly go through the, the committee process, and Joanne's going to give you some background and talk about the recommendation. Just hit the little button in the middle?
The right.
Well, I did, but...
The right button.
Right side's not working, you have to move it for me. Not working. So, that's what I just said. Next. Okay, the advisory committee, as, as I mentioned in, at your retreat in November 2015, we talked about appointing a middle school advisory committee. Ultimately, we selected that committee in May 2016, there were 45 members, we took people who volunteered, and then we selected other members that were representing different community groups, so that we had a broad representation across the community. The committee was charged with developing and evaluating options for renovating or replacing Taylor and Warrington Middle Schools. We, the committee was also charged with engaging the community, this was a key piece that we discussed at your retreat, to engage the community in considering what the middle school options were and what the community felt like they wanted to see. And then the committee developed a recommendation for your consideration to use in making a decision for middle school modernization, and that's the recommendation we're bringing to you tonight. As I said, there were 45... As I said, there were 45 members on the committee. They're listed above. Do if, do we have any committee members here tonight other than Joanne? Randy was a committee member. Anybody else here? Sarah was a committee member. We had, we had parents, we had students on the committee. We had someone from the clergy, someone from the community college. Business community was represented. You, we had Town of Warrington, the school board, the Board of Supervisors. So, teachers, administrators, so we tried to have a very broad representation. Former teachers, people who had been in Warrington and Taylor Middle Schools, people from Auburn Middle School, so that the other middle schools were represented as well. So we had very broad representation. I'd just like to say that it was a wonderful committee. The members were very committed to this process. They did a wonderful job. They were engaged during the meetings, and some of our meetings were very lengthy, time-consuming, and hard efforts. It was hard work. And so they did a great job, and on, I'd like to say on my part that I'm just grateful for the time and effort that they spent on this project. And there, when we went into this process, there were no preconceived options. The committee developed options, and the option that I think we ultimately came up with was not one that we conceived at, in the beginning of the process. So I think that it was a very worthwhile effort, and I think that the decision to use an advisory committee was an excellent one. I just wanted to give you briefly, so that you can see kind of the effort that went into this. The committee was appointed in May, and during the summer months and into September, the committee toured Warrington Middle School, so they could see the condition of it, Taylor Middle School, Auburn, because Auburn is our newest middle school. And then we also went to Frederick County, Virginia, and they toured the new middle school in Frederick County that just opened this September, so they could see what's being done with brand-new middle schools right now. There were four committee meetings, the ones that are in kind of the beige-y-pinky color, those were the committee meetings. There were two community dialogues, and the meeting in the middle was an options development subcommittee meeting. Joanne's gonna talk about that a little bit more. So they spent a lot of time on this process. So I'm gonna turn it over to Joanne and let her tell you about the process and submit the report and recommendation to you.
Okay. Thank you very much for having me and allowing me to talk about this. And I too enjoyed the process and thought that it was very worthwhile and hope that the recommendation, when you all carry it further, will get resounding approval. The community engagement process was kind of a culmination of the committee meeting. So we would have a committee meeting, and then we would engage the community and have a couple more meetings and engage the community. So I'm gonna talk about the community engagements first, and then kind of go through the recommendation. So the two community dialogues, we had the first meeting, we had, we had 66 people attend the meeting, actually physically attend the meeting, and 652 people responded to the survey online, which is a pretty significant number for our community, I think. And in the second community meeting, there was 52 members who attended, and 293 people responded to the survey in the second community meeting. In the first community dialogue, we were trying to figure out what the community thought about renovating or replacing both of the middle schools. And so one of the major questions that we asked were, would you like to renovate, would you renovate or replace Taylor? There was lots of information given to the community about what that meant, so they could make an educated decision. And 64% said that they would replace Taylor Middle School. The second question that was asked, which is the next slide, was the same question regarding Warrington Middle School. And in this case, it was kind of fifty, almost 50/50. A little bit more actually were in favor of renovating Warrington Middle School. So there wasn't as much support for replacing Warrington as there was for Taylor. But still, you know, everybody kind of, they had the information that was given to them to make that decision. And after that meeting, there were, there was another committee meeting where we kind of went over what the community said, those 600 people that responded and everybody else. And then we discussed, well, there was an options committee picked, and basically that was very random. It was everybody who was available on the day that that meeting was gonna happen put their name on a card. We put it in a bucket, and they picked three names out of it, and then some backups in case people couldn't make it. And I was actually picked to be at that meeting. That meeting was an all-day brainstorming meeting. There were a couple of school board members there. There were three committee members. The Janice and Dr. Jack were there, and we had a couple of other, like the finance people, and all of the consultants were there as well. And so we had lots of expert information on hand to ask questions about all kinds of different things. So we talked about all the different options that we could think of: renovating, replacing, combining, you know, all kinds of different stuff. We talked about the pros and cons of each of those options. We asked about the boundaries and where the people were, how many people were in this area or that area. We talked about costs, timelines. I mean, we talked about a lot of different stuff. It was all-day thing. And then we, we brought the options back to the committee, and the committee kind of went through and decided which, well, I guess the options committee came up with the three best options. And then we went to the community meeting with those options. And so these were those options. The first one was to build a new Taylor and a new Warrington on the existing sites. That would cost $98 million, and it would take several years to complete, because it would have to be done in two separate sections, basically. And in, in that particular community, when we went to the community with that, the respondents, 42% of them supported that idea. 58% of the respondents did not support doing that, probably because of the price tag. So then we, the other two options, there was Option 2A and 2B. Option 2A was to consolidate the Taylor Middles, Taylor and Warrington Middle School on the Taylor Middle School site. It would be in a thousand, a thousand-student capacity, and it would cost $55 million. And in that one, the community, 64% of the community strongly supported that option. Base, the cost is based on how long it would take. So if we were to start the project and finish the project by 2021. So that was part of it, too. I think that was the lowest cost. Option 2B was to do a 900-student school, again, on the Taylor Middle School site, and then to do an addition at Auburn Middle School. And that would allow a few more students and a little bit more mobility, and would cost $61 million. That could be done in the same timeframe, because Auburn could be done at the same time that the consolidated school was being built. And 54% of the respondents supported that idea. So then there was the question of where to do it, and I guess I kind of said that it was Taylor Middle School, but we, there were two different questions on the survey. One, rate your support for Taylor Middle, using the Taylor Middle School site. And 81% of people thought that the Taylor Middle School site was a good site to put the consolidated school. And then Warrington Middle School, the second question. 70 respondents said they would prefer that, which 26% said that they would prefer to have the school built on the Warrington Middle School site. So we get to the recommendation now. So the recommendation was first, not to choose between 2A and 2B, because we felt like that was something that the school board would need to decide based on all the information that, that they had at the time to use. So it would either be 1,000-student capacity at $55 million, or a 900-student-capacity school with a 300-student addition at Auburn for $61.4 million. There were pros and cons, and those are listed on, on the next slide. But some of the major things to consider, building on the Taylor Middle School site, was basically that the Taylor Middle School site was larger. The community and the committee supported honoring the history of both schools in some way at the new middle school. And then also, you know, the boundary adjustments that would need to happen. If they were just to consolidate, you could maybe wait a little while to do that. So the site plan, the good thing about either 2A or B is that Taylor Middle School could remain open, and students can continue to go to school in Taylor until the new school was built. So in the orange part up at the top, that would be kind of the phase one of the project. And the building would be, the new building would be situated somewhere over in that area. And then once that was built, all the students could move in. The old Taylor Middle School would be demolished, and the fields and other amenities of the school would then be built after that. So it would kind of allow, so we don't have to do trailers and moving students and figuring out where everybody's gonna go and all of that stuff. And I think that was it. Then the benefits and challenges are listed there. Costs and educational opportunities, and the potential for transportation efficiencies are all the benefits. Some of the challenge was just to be training the staff, and, you know, what would a larger school mean to the community? And the town, the area that it would be in would still be town, but it wouldn't be as close as Warrington was. So that's it, I think. Did I forget anything? Well, Janice is gonna do next steps.
I can tell you about the next steps, but do you have any questions?
Yeah.
Before we talk about the next steps?
Any questions?
No.
Okay. So the report's now submitted to you. It is posted online. There's a link online to the full report. It's about 260 pages long. It has appendices that have minutes and reports from every meeting that was held. So if anybody is interested in any of the details of the meetings, they're in that report. You have a copy of the summary report. That's also posted online. It's about a six-page executive summary that talks about the recommendation. So you have that information. We are working now with the county to try to schedule the consultants to come back, where they will talk to the school board, and then they will talk to the school board and county liaison committees, and do that on the same day. And so we're looking at doing that on, right now, we're looking at January 19th and January 26th. Though we don't know which day's gonna work for the county. We're waiting to hear from them. Then, we haven't put any hard dates on these, because we don't know until we get the liaison committee in, I'm sorry, the consultants in to talk to both committees and the school board. In February, some, you'll, we'll have a process for you to decide on whether you're gonna accept the committee's recommendation, or if you need to tweak it in some way. And of course, there's parts of it that you would need to tweak anyway, because you'll have to decide at a high level what the capacity would be of the school, initially at least to pursue funding, even if that changed over time as, as the, what happens in the school's enrollment changes between now and the time the project would start. You could make some adjustments. And then in March, meet with the school board and the Board of Supervisors could meet, would meet to talk about the CIP, which would include the middle school project that you determine is the most important. And in April, the county adopts the budget in the CIP. And of course, our, anything we do has to be adopted in the county's CIP to receive funding. So that's next steps. So any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lot of work went into this 271 pages. Lot of work. And thank you to all the committee. Ms. Duncan, we thank you on behalf of the board, for the entire committee. We ask, you know, if you do see them, please extend that thank you to each one of them. Thank you so much.
Yeah.
I really appreciate that. We do have one adjustment to the agenda, which is to have an information item about the budget calendar.
Good evening again. So to kind of tie up with what was just presented, the school board, as you recall, adopted the budget calendar on November 14th, 2016, with the note that there could be some updates, because it's a unique year with the CIP project. And so this is an effort for administration to make sure that we publicly make everybody aware of any minor changes and updates. We are currently in January, and so as Ms. Born mentioned, the first step there in the middle block, discussing the school board reviewing the advisory committee recommendations is occurring at this time, or has occurred, sorry. And we're currently trying to schedule a meeting on the 19th or the 26th, so that's why it says that. The, the county administrators' meeting was originally scheduled for the 19th, but it's very likely that that meeting will move, depending on the flow of this process. And the county has been very, they've been working with us on that. The superintendent's, sorry, the superintendent's proposed budget was originally scheduled for January 23rd. However, that's also going to possibly change to the 19th or the 26th, and it's kind of tied to this date, okay? So we'll be prepared to present whenever that day is set. And just so you're aware, board and citizens, we'll be updating this. This calendar's available on the, on the website. There's a link right on the first page. And so as soon as we are aware, we will update the website, and we will also let you all know. Everything else is pretty much the same. I do need to update you on one thing that was discussed in Finance Committee earlier, and that is, originally, we had planned for the school board's work session to occur the first week of February, but as it turns out, that's more likely going to be the last week of this month, due to some, some scheduling issues. Okay? So I will be updating that. That just happened, so I will update that, so you're aware. And as was discussed in November, most likely, the two-by-two meetings and the joint school board and the county board meeting may not be needed. However, it is very possible, as Ms. Born noted in her presentation, the March meeting may turn into a CIP meeting, okay? So we're leaving that date there, because the process is fluid. Do you have any questions or concerns for me?
Not at this time, but I'm sure there will be some issues.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
And by rule, do we have to adopt these changes? We do not have to adopt these changes, so they're just informational.
Right. Right.
All right. Thank you very much. Is there anything else to come before the board this evening? All right. Movement to adjourn?
Move to adjourn.
Thank you all very much for coming this evening.
Thank you.